Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for February 16, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. There are no public hearings this evening. But before we begin the meeting, I'm going to request a motion that the board go into executive session for a few minutes to discuss personnel kind of matter. So if I have a motion.
So moved.
Second, we move to second, we go into executive session. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. We're going to adjourn for about five or six minutes, okay? Thank you. Okay, sorry. Thank you. I'd like to motion to go back into regular session. So moved, so moved to go back into regular session. We have a second?
Second.
Second, call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. One, two, three, four, five, six to zero, yeah. Okay. First, I mean generally no public hearings. Secondly, motion to suspend rules.
So moved.
Second, let's move to second, we suspend the rules. We call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Is anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on any agenda items, agenda items only? Okay. Okay, see, no one. I move that we close the, or we resume the rules. Seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, plan review number one, Poughkeepsie World Cemetery, new access drive site plan, waterfront consistency review regarding proposed new access drive and signal modifications at US Route 9 and Sharon Drive, fill area elimination of an existing access drive, internal road intense modifications to a 2.4 acre project area, 342 South Avenue is owned are for a residence, single family, four acre district in WD2 waterfront District 2, 160.5 acres, unlisted action, Poughkeepsie World Cemetery owner.
Hi.
Good evening. We understand there are a number of concerns.
I'm sorry, you just got to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know we are, but you know.
I'm Amy Hay from the Chasing Companies.
I'm Brian Barry from Poughkeepsie World Cemetery.
So, this has been in front of you once before. I know that there's a number of concerns regarding the pedestrian improvements. We're prepared to make those changes in accordance with the DOT request, and we'll work with the DOT on the requirements for that. There's an issue with the onsite queuing, the curve. We're prepared to also change that in accordance with the DOT requests. And the entrance being installed prior to truck traffic coming in and out through the proposed egress, we're prepared to install that to completion prior to the traffic being allowed to use the access point. I think those are the major concerns.
Those are the three big points, yes.
Okay.
Good. Okay.
You stole my thunder.
Sorry.
Those are the three major concerns. With those concerns addressed, then there are a few other cleanup items on the plans. We did receive a letter from the DOT this afternoon, probably about an hour, less than an hour ago, which is in your packets. Amy's comments do deal with those, they were anticipated. Then we are recommending that the planning board, in that case, proceed with a secret negative declaration, if you choose to do so, and if you do that, then we'd recommend a conditional site plan approval as well.
Okay.
I apologize, just as an FYI, there's also a resolution in here for a determination of waterfront consistency.
Right.
To waive the public hearing first, and then after the negative declaration, since the project's located in the waterfront area, the board needs to make a determination of consistency.
Okay. So before we, let me just move, let's just, we'll waive the public hearing, then I'll go for, well, go for comments, all right? So I move the planning board waive a site plan public hearing in accordance with Section 210, 151D.
Sir.
Moved in second, call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Before we do a secret, let me just go around the board, see if there's any additional comments. We'll start with Peter.
We've had a lot of discussion about the signalization, the pedestrian, the walk. But I just have a couple of quick questions. I don't think you ever really have discussed the fill, which essentially would be creating a landfill permit here, and the nature of the soil that's going to be deposited. And I'm, two things, I have two questions. Number one, the volume is stated to be 10,500 cubic yards. Is someone going to be monitoring that, so it's not, doesn't turn into 15,000, 20,000 yards?
You're welcome to jump in, but I know that the applicant has incorporated many of the standard conditions for land contour permit, which this is not, but they've incorporated many of the requirements for a land contour permit into the notes and the requirements on this plan set. And I believe that there are notes regarding record keeping and reporting of the, of the fill material imported. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it'll be monitored?
It won't, it'll be recorded. The applicant will be responsible for providing reports of that. I don't think, the only monitoring would be for the standard monitoring by the, by the town and by the applicant for erosion sediment controls under the SWIP, the Approved Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan.
Okay, but when the, when the fill is completed, the town engineer is going to go to the site and check the land contours to make sure that they're consistent with what was proposed.
There's a requirement for an ASBIL survey, which would require that the elevations substantially meet the, those that were proposed.
Okay. The other thing is, the, the content of the soil itself, have any test holes been dug? And has, has the soil been tested for any contamination?
The, the proposed fill material?
Yes.
Is coming from Basser Hospital, so it's, it's shot rock. It's not, it's all clean fill.
Shot rock is?
Like, they're blasting too.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's.
Okay, so this is pulverized material?
Yeah, so it'll be fine particles, mostly, mostly blasted rock.
100%.
It's all coming from Basser Hospital, all the material.
The material is, but is, is it all going to be crushed rock, or will there be other fill material involved?
It might be some mixture of soil and, and blasted rock, but it will be, it's all clean.
The only reason I ask is, you know, that was historically an industrial area, and it's surrounded by brownfield, pretty much, if you go down to the old Dillaville site. I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're not importing any, anything that is, has, is contaminated in nature.
Understood. It's predominantly going to be the shot rock, so.
Can we make a note that we just get some kind of verification that it's?
Clean.
Clean?
Yes.
I'd be happy with that, as long as there's some.
Yeah. It's that mountain, it's a mountain they're taking down there along Route 9.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a valid question, Fred.
Had to have something done on their site, that soil, haven't they?
I don't know if they had to have it tested on their site before they took it down.
We'll look into it tomorrow.
I would assume so, but we'll find out.
Just certify it.
Okay, that's, that's, all right. Let me get a condition?
Sure.
Okay, good.
That's it.
Oh, thank you. Carl?
Yeah, I think you covered most everything with the crosswalk addition, because that was the source of issue with the bus stop there on the northbound side, and people that get off the bus going southbound, I guess, have trouble getting across, so. The only other thing I think you might want to consider, I don't know if, the gate you're putting in, if that has access for pedestrians with the, with the apartments across the street in the neighborhood there for people to walk. I've done your walking tour myself, it's a great way to hit, learn the history of Poughkeepsie, to do that, so, it's something you may want to consider.
Okay.
Good, good point. Ben?
No, I'm, I'm okay. Glad to see that this is progressing in a timely fashion, and that this works to be done accordingly now, so.
I like, I agree, I like the idea of the gate and the access there, so I think that's, that'll work out. Ed?
Yeah, my understanding is that all are grading, there's such that it runs away from the Locust Grove Prosthetic Line and towards the cemetery.
Correct.
And are the trees new from the last time?
Are they new?
Along the border?
Uh, we did add, we added, uh, 11 trees.
I just can't remember if, oops. Uh-oh, I'm in trouble again.
Right, that's where they.
Yeah, those are long there.
Those are new.
That's what I thought. What kind of trees?
It would be, they'd be coniferous, evergreens.
Evergreens? Evergreens, yeah. Any specific type?
I think I did call out a type.
There's nothing on a map that tells me, that I could find.
Actually, one of, one of the conditions is to provide call, a landscaping schedule or callouts to identify what they are, what their size is, and to provide for a standard planting detail, subject to staff review and approval.
Okay.
Just as long as.
That's already in the conditions.
We stay away from Canadian, they have this problem tracking certain diseases, wooly adalgia.
Okay.
Stay away, stay away from?
Stay away from, yeah. Unless you can get a certain variety, which is non-contagious.
Do you have a preference of what you'd like to see there?
No, I'll leave that to the landscape artists.
Red for pears?
Well, Matt, but I thank you for coming to the pedestrian thing and working it out. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian?
I'm, I'm all set. Great, good job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nope. We have town engineer here? So, what's next here? Sure, if you like.
I'll just note for the board's resolution that when you get to the section on conditions, the planning department conditions recommended, town engineer's comments are dated February 9th, the DOT's comments are dated December 2nd, and the email that's written there has been superseded by February 16, 2017 correspondence.
Okay.
And then we have the one additional item discussed on adding a note for fill.
Right, and then we'll, we'll mention it, comments made by the board. Okay. Ready?
No. I'm trying to find one for this one.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that the planning board determine that the application is, no, says incomplete.
Uh, go to the, then there's a.
Next one.
Alternate on the next page at the top of page five.
Ah, yes. Page five, sorry.
Right. I move the planning board as lead agency, hereby determines that Poughkeepsie World Cemetery's new access drive and land contour site plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated February 16, 2017.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
It's moved in second, that the planning board is the lead agency, it hereby determines that the Poughkeepsie World Cemetery new access drive and land contour site plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated February 16, 2017. We call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposed activity is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program, LWRP, because it will be conducted in a manner consistent with such program.
Second?
It's moved in second, the planning board determines that the proposed activity is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie approved local waterfront revitalization program, the LWRP, because it will be conducted in a manner consistent with such program. We call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
What are we going to do here?
Get down to the second one, following C. The two line.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for Poughkeepsie World Cemetery new access drive and land contour site plan, subject to.
Following.
The following of one through four?
One through, let's see, one, two, the date is February 9th, three, where there's two correspondents from DOT, one being December 22 of 2016.
That'd be an update, right?
And, and the one for today of 2016.
February 16th.
February 16th, right. One through four, and five will be the, the fill, the consistency, how'd you write it?
Notes, um, notes, add notes requiring, add notes requiring cleanliness of the imported fill.
Say again?
Add notes requiring cleanliness of the imported fill.
Requiring cleanliness of the imported fill, that's number five.
I accept that.
Okay. And I think, were there any other points that were brought down?
Second?
And the other thing was that they were going to do trees that there were not, what?
Oh, no, there was one more thing.
Just stay away from Canadian hemlocks.
Stay away from Canadian hemlocks. No Canadian.
I think you've probably seen that at the site as well.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. So, do we have a second?
Second again.
We move to second, the, 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 the,[1383.43] Okay. There's no architectural review, so I think we're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When do you expect to be able to get going? Well, you gotta get the plans in, we gotta get all the frigging signs, so...
And we have to work with the DOT, so that's...
Oh, so it's a couple of years, alright. I'm sure it'll happen sooner than that. You never know. Okay. Before we continue, I meant to say this in the beginning of the meeting, um, one of our board members is very, very ill in the hospital, so I'm just, Richard Davidson, who's the vice chair of the board, so I'm just sending out our good wishes to him for recovery, speedy recovery, and ask the people to keep them, keep him in their thoughts. Appreciate that. Okay. Number two, Planet Wings Edition 661 Duchess Turnpike, site plan review for a proposed 700 square foot addition to the 3,300 square foot building and renovations to lease 2,500 square feet to a retail tenant and retain 1,500 square feet for a continued restaurant use, 661 Duchess Turnpike, ESC Business Shopping Center, .721 acres, the Type 2 Action Planet Wings of Poughkeepsie owner. Hello?
Good evening, Matt Day, Day Engineering, here to represent Planet Wings. As you know, the parcel is located at the intersection of Duchess Turnpike and Burnett Boulevard. It is located in the Business Shopping Center zoning district and is approximately two-thirds of an acre in size. When the board last saw this project, an expansion was proposed at the north end of the property. We're not doing that anymore to simplify matters for the applicant. As of this evening, we do not have elevations ready, so as far as the ARB goes, we're gonna need to defer to the next meeting. Other than that, no major site plan modifications are being made, just mainly internal, as far as the building goes. As far as the drive aisle goes, we wanna keep the drive aisle, but we're taking the drive-through window out, I'm sure you know that already. And I will defer to the board for any other comments or questions?
Okay, thank you.
Sure. We've got, there's a number of comments on cleanup in the plans in our review, that said if the board's comfortable, we feel that most of them can be handled as matters of a conditional approval, so we're recommending that the board waive the site plan public hearing for this application. There is no secret review because it is a Type 2 action under secret that doesn't require an environmental review, and then proceed with a conditional site plan approval, and then architectural review, the board may wanna discuss its preliminary take on, on, on the rendering that you have, so that when the applicant returns, they have your feedback. That said, we did on two, on a site visit recently, we identified a couple of additional items, which you have in a supplement dated February 15th. We're suggesting an additional few comments be added to the planning department's list. Basically, the, there's a pure portion of the building, which is shown as a part of the building area on the site plan, is in fact, um, an enclosure that is not part of the building. And in fact, as I learned today, it actually, it doesn't appear to have been subject to building site plan or building permit approval. That said, it's been there for a long time, it was painted with the, it looked as like it was part of the building back when the board approved architecture in 2007 and '08, so we have a couple of additional items in the supplement to be, which you can just add by reference. I would add one more to it, since I just learned today, uh, the lack of approvals, that they legalize the enclosure at the back and the trash enclosure, both of which was also moved around, and just work with the staff to legalize those, or revise them as needed so that they can be legalized. And that's it.
Okay. He mentioned, go around the board, let me start with Carl, Andy?
Nothing particular, I did see that there were, I think Eric recommended also, or that you might wanna make sure the sidewalk in front is connected in to the crosswalk through the handicap parking area.
We investigated that, because of the grade, it might not be possible, but we will, we'll try to get it done.
Look into that, okay, just, just to make additional connection there. I hear you're not gonna do architecture tonight, but, but next week, I don't know. It's kind of a dark building, the version I've seen anyway, versus other Verizon stores in the area, so whenever you get to that.
Part of the review has to be that...
It doesn't, mixing those two together, it doesn't seem, seem to go, I don't know. Planet Wings, that's to remain the same. Site plan wise, I think nothing more over what Eric had said. Couple little things to take care of, the pavement.
Nothing at this time. Okay. My, I think, since you gotta come back for architecture, because you don't have the elevations and so on, I'm gonna suggest we defer until the next time, only because I'd like to see what, what you need to do to make the back of the building legal, okay, and make it part of the plan, so as we do the whole plan, it all gets, you know, brought up to par, and inconsistent with the way the town, you know, it should be taken care of, so that's, that, those are my points. Ed?
Yeah. One of the things I'd like to see straightened out, my math is getting worse as I get older, but there seems to be three different sizes for the size of this building that's being quoted throughout this, your map, and maybe because of this building that's in the back, which is a cardboard box kind of thing, versus my Eric's numbers, et cetera. So anyway, I'd like to see that straightened out, okay? Additionally, some of the things that have been asked for, I'd like to see happen as well. There's gotta be a way to take care of that grading that will work out. Other than that, certainly the owner's gotta be more respectful of the laws regarding, you know, taking care of the sidewalk and the landscaping and all of that. There's been many violations made, and has been unattended to, taking care of snow removal, and it's hard to give someone, you know, another blessing when certain things aren't being taken care of. It sits right out there on a corner, it can be a blight at times, so take care of the property, pass the message on. Other than that, we're good to go.
Brian? Oh, you, Brian has to recute himself from his application, right?
Yes.
Too many wings?
Too many wings. The one, the one thing that Carl mentioned, that one, I don't have, know where my copy is, but as far as the building, the architecture, the one I saw was very, very dark. This guy?
Yeah.
So that's not gonna fly. We gotta make it a little more in keeping with, you know, what's the surrounding areas and other things going on in the town, as respect to some of the colors, alright? But...
What's the one on Route 9 look like?
The one on Route 9, it's kinda light colored, it's...
White, isn't it?
The one, yeah, the one by Barnes and Noble? Yeah, something like that, the one by Barnes and Noble.
Barnes and Noble?
Yeah, on Route 9, something along those lines, but...
Something a little brighter.
Yeah, that looks a little dark, dark Vader-ish.
I think what I was getting at, what I was getting at too is that, you know, clashes, but the building has two uses, it, you know, it's two different totally clashing architectures.
Right, yeah, agreed.
You gotta kinda unify that a little bit if you can, I don't...
Yep, I think the signs would be good to show people which way to go, where the wings are versus the cell phones. Well, some people can't tell the difference between wings and cell phones, but, you know, hey, no, you're probably gonna be able to smell it. Exactly, okay, that'll work. So, can I, excuse me, John? I'm sorry, Peter, go ahead.
That's okay. Eric, you mentioned a structure.
Do we have...
I'd like, if you, if you wouldn't mind, we have an amended site plan here dated August 2016, and those structures aren't depicted on the site plan. Could you depict them on the site plan? So we'd have some sense of...
Well, we did, as part of that building outline, it's treated as part of the building, but if you'd like, we can, we can label it. See that little bump at the back?
Oh, okay, gotcha.
That may be part of the square footage kinda thing, as to which is, which, which is which in terms, is it internal square footage or external or, or what?
There's no roof on that.
That's why, that's why I'm asking that, when you come back in after we defer, that you show all that, and so it's all clear, so everybody knows who's on first and what it, you know, it all fits, and all the structures are there. And I would, also, I haven't, I didn't see it here, but a landscape plan would be appropriate. Okay? Yes, I'd like to see a landscape plan also, because it does, it has kinda gone downhill, and the owners, you know, it's hard to keep up with everybody, but, you know, they need to take pride in their property too.
Also, Neil had mentioned that we might be able to attach a note to the plan to address the problems they've been having with snow removal on the site, appearance tickets that had to be issued, so...
Snow removal, the storage, and then maybe needs to be removed, right?
There have been appearance tickets issued in the past because they didn't remove the snow on a timely basis, and Neil mentioned that we might be able to attach some to the plan that would give the zoning administrator a little bit more.
Okay, that's, that's a good point, because certainly as a Verizon store, it'll be busier all day long with more cars coming in and out, so we gotta make sure there's enough parking for everyone. So if snow has to be removed during, you know, storm, after a storm and someone, we should have something on there to hang our hat on.
Regarding that, I don't think there's any identification of where people dump snow on this site.
Snow storage?
See anything?
No, that, that should be called out, if in fact there's places...
Are you right or wrong on that, Eric?
I don't recall seeing snow storage identified locations.
For a plan to mitigate this snow, should there be a...
Yeah.
So that's gonna be, gotta be part of the plan. Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, let's see.
Matt, when, when would you anticipate, how quickly do you anticipate turning this around? Because my thought is...
What's that? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, well, my thought was that you might, if it would be helpful for you to take a shot at it and then meet with your client and sit down with us to run through it, work all these things out, I'd be happy to meet with you to do that. If, if you think it's, if you think it's pretty straightforward, then you can go full bore, but if it's helpful to sit down and run through these things before packaging the next submittal, I'm happy to do that with you.
Okay, you know, I think everything's pretty straightforward, but if it arises, we'll go ahead and do that as well.
Alright, I'll make the motion if it's okay, if anyone might care.
Yeah, sure.
I move the planning board waive the site plan public hearing in accordance with Section 210-151D.
Second?
Moved to second, call a question? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. I move the planning board defer conditional site plan approval for Planet Wings Edition 661 Duchess Turnpike, subject to the following, one through five, and the comments made this evening, additional information that was needed. Have a second?
Second.
Moved to seconded, call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero, and we will conduct architectural review, hopefully next time when you come in.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
A question for Eric. Eric, will we document all of the comments made tonight to him?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Eric sends out all the comments after the meeting to the applicant. Okay. Okay, next, application. Who's? Soon as I find my agenda, who's got an agenda? I managed to fold in with everything else. Here it is. Okay. Creek Road Apartments Discussion for Proposed Site Resoning by the Town Board from BN Neighborhood, Business Neighborhood, to RN Residence Multi-Family District in an amended site plan application to the Planning Board for 32 apartments in three buildings, include 12 unit buildings and three stories and one eight unit building of two stories, 84 to 92 Creek Road, bone BN Business, Neighborhood Business District, 5.12 acres, it's an unlisted action, JPJR Holdings LLC owner.
Dan, you're gonna need the screen?
I had, I had assumed that you guys would all be able to see it, but I'm not sure if you will be able to see it.
They, they will, if you plug in, they'll see it, but also the audience, and TV will see as well.
That would be good, I'd appreciate that.
And there's axolotls in here. Or any other questions or whatever, from engineering?
In the meantime, I can hand out these as well. Love it. This is a constant exhibit showing how the new architect's building would...
Okay.
...buy in sight.
Seeing Canadian hemlocks, I guess that's good. Oh, listening?
Do that.
Bring my magnifying glass?
Palm trees, I'm into palm trees. Wish we could use a couple palm trees right about now.
They're white pines, interesting. These are great glasses, I'm gonna keep them. Glassy too.
JD, what's up? Okay, I'll talk in this microphone. Where's yours?
Okay.
Please identify yourself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design, we're the engineer for the applicant.
Michael Berto, the architect for the applicant.
John Page with JPJR Holdings.
This project had last appeared before the planning board around October of last year, and as a result of that, we had a review from your professionals and planning staff, and we had identified a series of some of the more significant issues, and what we did was, we kinda took a step back and did a project reset on this, and the previous, the previous layout had included a set of three buildings as such, and it had 32 density units, there were 32 single bedroom apartment units in there. And we had some issues with regard to this front yard setback, maybe I should just do this here. Sorry. We had some issues with the front yard setback here being 21.9 feet as opposed to the 30 feet. That was designed originally to, to line up with some of the other buildings that were along Creek Road at the time, but that was also previously shown as a two-story building, but this is a three-story building to get the, the density units that we had over here. We had also had a, an issue with the separation between the buildings, town code required certain separation between the buildings based on the height of the, of the buildings. We were showing 15 feet, and we would've had to have gotten a variance from zoning board for that. The, the original front yard setback I was just talking about would be a planning board variance, but there was also 32 units shown in the three buildings, and it's a 5.18 acre parcel, we're allowed six units per, per acre, and the calculation is 31 would be allowed. So as a result, in order to remove the variances from the zoning board, which would have been the number of density units and the separation between the buildings, we've come up with a plan to put together a single building that has 31 density units, or 31 apartments in it, and in doing this, we are able to also avoid what we would've had to have done with the three fa, uh, I'm sorry, the three building layout, which was, if we had to provide the separation, if we weren't able to get the variance from the zoning board, this building right here would've had to have slid east, southeast, and then this building here would've had to have kind of looped around over here, and the problem with that is that we have pretty significant slopes over there, we've got some rock outcrop that we've observed over there, and we, we thought it would be best if we avoided that. So this plan will have less impervious coverage than the three buildings before, and will be able to disturb just about the same amount, but it's, it's slightly less with regard to some of those areas that are gonna be more steep and more rock, which would be more of a concern for us on our side, more of a concern for you on your side with the review. Is that it? Yeah, I mean, like, like I'm saying, we basically just did a project reset, we wanted to really focus on some of those major issues that we had identified before, I, before fixing any of the other lingering smaller issues.
Okay, so this now becomes a plan of record, if you will?
If, if this planning board gives us an endorsement of this layout, we would, we would, we would come back with this plan.
I was just saying for documentation's sake, because the description of what we have here is different than what we're seeing.
Correct, because we don't, the application has not yet been revised.
Okay, so, so that the, the description will change once we have a discussion if you decide that's the way you wanna go or not.
Right. We're, we're, we're searching for your feedback before we further the plan.
Did everyone get copies of this? I assume they did.
This plan overall has less variances and things that are required?
Yes.
And you, yeah, and you don't have the issue of the 32 versus 31?
Correct.
With the white or is that the...
Yes, it's the light. Okay, so since this is a discussion, I think I'll just open it up, anybody, Peter?
I, I think it's a, a great idea. I think it's clearly superior to what you proposed when you first came here. You're losing very little by going this way. You're using the white pine here, I guess it'll be on the southern border, which is really smart, because it's gonna grow big and fast. The service berry, can you describe what that is? You have that, that's on the west, on Creek Road?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually a flowering tree.
Deciduous?
Yes, yes it is.
Okay, I, just, this'll come up generally, on the west elevation, the side, the end of the building that faces Creek Road, might, if there was something you could do with, you know, that's a monolithic end of the building, you could have something there since it's facing the street, something that has a little bit more interest to it would be great. But I think the way that architecturally you've broken up the building, because it's a long, monolithic building, I think you've done a terrific job...
Thank you.
...with that, looks really, really good, it's very attractive.
Hey, that, I'd say my biggest issue with this plan was, you know, thinking it's as long as a football field almost, and what's it gonna look like, but these architectural rending, renderings show you've done a nice job with the peaks and, and the offsets and stuff, that it does not look like a warehouse.
Thank you.
Ted?
Yep.
Anybody else? Ben?
I agree, I think this is a big change, lot of improvements. I think this is gonna work a lot better than the other design. I know Luz is here. You have anything to say?
I do. I didn't know if you wanted to go around the planning board first.
We'll say the best for later.
Okay.
Ted? Ted?
I don't know, do you wish to go before, or...
No, I'll go last.
I'm trying to read the fine print. Back of the parking lot, you got a line drawn, it comes down and then almost makes a right angle turn, the 226, I believe it is, what, what is that number supposed to be?
Uh, that is, as I had mentioned, we haven't refined the plan completely, that's probably an old grid line for right now, but this is, this is really more of an exhibit...
Is it, or...
I'm sorry?
Is it the distance to that point from the end of the parking lot?
What's the number you had said again?
In the yellow, in the yellow?
In, in, in the gray, you got, 226. I'd come up with about 180 feet from the back of that parking lot to the sidewalk, that's what I was curious about.
Yeah, so that's a contour line in the parking lot.
It is a contour line, okay.
Side is 270 feet long.
So what?
The building length is 270.
Right, but the distance from the back of that long parking lot, or the shorter parking lot, I guess I would call it.
Yeah.
This part here...
Where it went, I don't know where it went.
No, he's trying to get...
From the back of this, to that sidewalk, I'd come up with about 180 feet. Point is, if, if I'm carrying groceries and I got that last parking spot, that's a long ways.
They have, I think they're gonna have concierge.
Yeah, but at any rate, you got the sidewalk on the far side, I'm wondering if you couldn't bring it to the other side, and I guess you got some kind of a drainage thing going on over on the other side?
Yeah, what we have right now is, is the parking lot sheet flows in, and that's a gravel diaphragm, which is pre-treatment before the water is allowed to infiltrate into the soils.
Yeah, well, two things, one, I think if I counted correctly, you got 66 parking places?
There's 66.
And there's, these are all single bedroom... And there's, these are all single-bedroom units, so you got thirty-one units?
Yep.
We get in excess of parking?
Sixty-two is required by code, but it's also my understanding that in the past that there was a question about us not having enough when we had sixty-six and sixty-four was proposed.
Okay, so at any rate, all I'm trying to figure out is can you do something to break it up a little and get it closer to the building? I can imagine that these, what, fourteen parking spots, well, twenty-four in the front of the building are going to go fast and it's just a long distance to be carrying anything and again, something you, if you can look at some other means of sidewalk more in the center of this rather than the far outside. You follow where I am?
Yeah, I follow where you're at. I'm, I'm not sure if I can accommodate at the moment, but I'll put my.
I don't know if you can move. I know you got tough contours over on that side. But if you could move even a parking lot a little bit over to make for a five-foot wide or a four-foot wide against that drainage area. Take a look at it, see what you can come up with. I'm just trying to make it easier for the people that get stuck way out on the end carrying luggage, groceries, whatever.
These are supposed to be for students and young professionals, so they should be able to carry that, no problem.
Yeah, yeah, right, sure. I've seen some students.
You're saying we're too old to be students?
I guess that's the message he's saying. If we go to the college, we can't, we can't park out there.
You know, it'd be interesting if they could make this a little lighter. They could have it one way and then have a sidewalk out there.
I'm trying to leave it up to their own creative juices.
Answer my question, because I was going to ask fifty-five plus, but no, you're going after.
I'm sorry, I can't.
You're going after a younger demographic, correct? You're not going after the fifty-five plusers?
No, that's.
Other than that, it looks great. Good job on the redo and.
I wasn't quite finished because I'm.
I'm sorry.
He'll come up with a nice landscaping plan and lighting.
That can be my question.
You got it.
Since we're going to say the best for last, I'll go. This is always. Wait, can you give us a sec? Can you make them a little bigger? You know, it's really tough to rate. You know, we're going to break out the magnifying glasses, so.
That's why we're supposed to have it on the screen, but that went away for some reason.
If you make it a little bigger when you print them, that'll be very, very helpful. Secondly, along the lines of what he was saying, a suggestion might be with this parking lot, if you could widen this a little bit and maybe make it one-way and maybe a walkway down the middle would be helpful. That's possible. Just a thought. You have to give me an answer.
With a couple of trees and landscaping?
Yeah, maybe.
Nice idea.
Maybe some decorative lighting, you know. Something like that. Think about that. That's, that's good. And my only concern about the architecture, while I applaud what you did and everybody agrees with that, I think it's great. It's, to me, when I look at this, it's it's very repetitious. Okay, now, we haven't seen the details of the color and maybe you're going to use different color brick in different spots or block and so on. So, but you kind of got to break it up so it doesn't look like it's just a barracks.
Yeah, well, if you, if you look at it, I mean, it is, I mean, it's a symmetrical building.
Yeah.
But we're planning on between different materials as well as different colors, trying to break it up that way.
Okay, good.
Being the fact that we're all one-bedroom units, trying to keep construction down a little bit, it's, that's, that's a lot of the reasons why a lot of things are symmetrical.
Okay, but the colors.
If you see, I mean, there's three or four different types of siding material already on here.
Yeah.
Between that and colors, and one reason why a lot of the breaks are there so that we can start and stop colors.
Okay. We'll be interested in seeing that as you, you know, as you present that.
I think actually also, once you see it as a three-D, as more of a perspective, you'll be able to get the, a better view of it and a better, I think it'll look a lot better than flat two-D.
Good, okay. Well, I mean, I like it. It's fine. It's good. We need a little more detail to see that. But it's a very, very nice change and very well done. My only other problem is all these college students, they look all exactly the same. They may not make it back to the same place twice.
I was going to say, if you're worried about somebody coming home drunk, walking into.
You have to make the numbers real big.
That's why they don't want seniors.
I see, okay. Please, digress.
What do you?
Good job, I take the better bearing.
So I kind of went back through the record to see where this had been, because originally this was two parcels. And I think we're down to, to one. And then we were trying for the thirty-two units and there were a couple of variants that were needed. And I think it really came from the planning board scratching their heads going, wait a minute, we're rezoning this thing, but you're anticipating needing variances. So I think that was the last thing in October. The board said, go back and try to make something conforming. And, and I went back through all the zoning standards. And it looks like you've done it. I, I didn't find any issues even with the parking setback. And of course, when I saw just the plan, my first concern was, ooh, flat building. And I see that you've, you've made an attempt to articulate, which I think really helps in terms of, it, it looks like the bumpouts are along the facade wall, but then you also have decks?
Yes.
Okay, protruding. I think that will add visual interest. It would be interesting to see some kind of a rendering. And then I don't know. I guess the long view is going to be, it'll be seen from the parking lot. I'm not sure it would be seen from nearby businesses or anything. And agreed, if there's anything you can do to make the Creek Road elevation a little more interesting, that, that would be helpful.
Who was that? Peter's pointing?
And then the other thing I was.
Well taken.
Of what?
That point's well taken.
Okay. And then it wasn't clear to me how the grading would work out, but I know that you needed to come here and hear from the board before you could start dealing with that. Is it possible this is going to end up stepping down the slope or will it be a straight?
We, we looked at that and, and as you correctly note, we didn't redo the grading in here too significantly just because we do want to get the two-D approval. We do have confidence we can get the, the plan to work with elevation. We're going to try to keep it all at one elevation along the whole front.
One finish for elevation.
Yeah, so what we have to do is just, we, we had to reach out to the consultant that had provided comments on the traffic and the entrance. We haven't heard back from him yet. It had to do with the queuing at the entrance. So once I get the entrance configuration changed, as I may have to, that's going to tell me what I can get grade-wise off a Creek Road and then back up so that I can try to keep a consistent elevation. We had originally, when Michael and I started discussing how to revise this plan, we were talking about stepping it. But it, it seemed that it would be a better plan if we could maintain a more consistent elevation. Because we do have a monolithic curb and sidewalk and short, relatively short runs into the building. So in order to meet ADA, we're going to have a hard time if we have steps in the, in the foundation of the building.
Okay. And I'm just trying to see if there was anything else.
You expect this to be almost all student housing?
Young professionals and students, correct?
Correct.
Where have we heard that before?
Well.
Yes, fair view. Okay, there'll be some questions.
I suppose I could ask the question now. About security or? Is there going to be a house mom or, you know, something, somebody there to kind of keep order or try?
Or a management company?
Manager supervisor, yes, it'll be professionally managed.
Will it be gated?
No.
Will the management company be on-site with seven-twenty-four?
No.
Okay, well, you know, okay. Fulton Avenue, they just, we just did Fox Run?
Right.
And they have some, that's much larger, don't get me wrong, but, you know, they, they certainly were proactive in trying to make sure that their investment is not abused.
Will there be cameras? That's for certain.
Okay, all right. And it's your property. I'm just trying to throw it out there. It's food for thought.
And I, I just want to add in, is, is it going to be just student or will it also be for young singles professionals?
Young, single professionals as well.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that because there is a need and most people leave college with debt. They're not ready to buy a house, so glad to hear that.
Amen. That's good. Nice, well done. That's your, I think you got a lot of positives here.
I think so, too. I appreciate that.
Okay, go, go forth and hope to see you coming real soon.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, number four, Duchess Golf Club rezoning and site plan. Patient rezoning recommendation to the town board regarding proposed applications to town board rezoning of a portion of the property to highway business BH District. And for planning board site plan approval, twenty-six, twenty-eight South Roads. Zone residence, single family, two-acre R-dash-two-A District, one to one-hundred-and-thirty-nine acres. It's a non-listed action, Duchess Golf Club LLC owner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joshua Mackey, Mackey, Butson, Wise. I represent Dr. Baki to my right. One minor housekeeping item. The actual owner is a company known as Et Quit. It's spelled E-T-Q-U-I-E-T-E-L-L-C.
E-Q.
E-T-Q.
Q-U-I-E-T-E?
Yes.
And you pronounce that?
Et Quit.
Uh, Et Quit, okay.
The prior owner was Duchess Golf Club LLC, but that's.
So we should refer to it from now. Great, thank you.
So to my right is Dr. Anthony Baki. He is the owner of a company known as Telostat. It's a medical technology company. I would describe it as high-tech. Over to my left are members of his management team. Dr. Joe Scarpa, he's the chief medical officer. And Nazri Michelin, the chief strategy officer. The proposal is to rezone a portion of the former Duchess Golf and Country Club site, which is approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-nine acres presently zoned as residential two-acre. Dr. Baki is proposing to rezone ten-point-nine acres along Route Nine to highway business, which is consistent with the neighboring parcels along Route Nine. The purpose of the proposed rezoning is so that Dr. Baki can locate his company, Telostat, at the former Duchess Golf clubhouse, which he will describe for you now in some detail how it will fit into that space quite nicely. And tell you a little bit about his company and what they're going to be doing there. But it's a very exciting opportunity for the town of Poughkeepsie and the community in general. So, Dr. Baki.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dr. Anthony Baki. I'm the owner of Duchess Golf Club. It's called Et Quit, which in Latin means peace and quiet. So when I saw the property, I loved the property. And my initial intent was to develop the property, continue it as a golf course. And to do catering, high-end catering and weddings and build some ponds, et cetera. And so I expanded the building initially, put new carpeting in, put a stone wall in front of the building. And then spent about a hundred thousand dollars on landscaping around the building so it would really look attractive. And as I was doing that, some things were happening in the background. We were developing companies. One of the companies was called Telostat. And so what is Telostat? Telostat is a company that transforms eighteen beds of a nursing home into an ICU-like setting. It's the first of its kind in the United States. Today, we received a grant from the New York State Department of Health for five million dollars. We're about to receive another grant from the federal government to replicate units like this for another five million dollars. What makes it so interesting is that we're able to treat very high-acuity patients in a nursing home. Typically, when you walk into a nursing home, you don't have the availability or the training requirements to treat these type of conditions. So the first thing we did was we hired ICU and CCU nurses. And then we brought intensivist in, in to monitor these eighteen beds. And the nurses taking care, taking care of a patient at a one-to-six ratio, which is unprecedented in nursing homes. So because of the outcomes that we saw, we were able to reduce something called thirty-day hospital readmissions. So what does that mean? So if a patient is discharged from a hospital and readmitted within thirty days, the hospital is now penalized by Medicare. Right now, that penalty is from zero to three percent of the total Medicare expenditure within the hospital. Next year, that changes. And the following year, the hospital is responsible for the full load on that second admission, regardless of the diagnosis. So hospitals are scrambling because they're worried about this readmissions. In Medicare, for a thirty-day period, twenty percent of patients are readmitted within thirty days. It costs the federal government twenty-six billion dollars, of which seventeen billion are available unnecessary admissions. Our company has been successful in reducing that readmission from twenty percent down to five percent documented. And that's why we received the state grant to replicate three units like this in New York State. So since the grant was given and awarded, the bill was passed in April of two thousand and sixteen, signed by the governor. Without any advertising program, we have forty-six locations in New York to build similar units. Not three, forty-six locations. So this is all happening while I'm working at Duchess Golf Course to do weddings. And suddenly I realize I better change my mind and do something that's going to really create jobs for the, the area. So we set out on a journey to really rethink the strategy and put together a game plan to really construct these units very quickly in New York State. As we're doing this, a national REIT, one of the second-largest REITs, Real Estate Investment Trust, that does healthcare in the United States, comes in and they see this unit and they want two-hundred location nationally. So we're up to two-hundred-and-forty-six locations in less than eight months. So this has grown leaps and bounds. And what made it so, so special is the technology that we utilize. So we have groundbreaking technology that we're utilizing in a nursing home. The technology allows me to monitor eight or nine hemodynamic functions of a patient. What does that mean? So as you're sitting there, I can monitor your oxygen levels, your blood pressure, your pulse, your respiration, your EKG with six leads in real time, your cardiac output, your stroke volume, your systemic vascular resistance, your cardiac index. All of these are, you know, wow to a doctor, but you guys really don't need to know that. But we can monitor that in real time in the nursing home. But when I discharge you home, you're going to home with a tablet that has the same technology. So now, for the first time in history, we can monitor patients at home. So when I discharge a patient from my unit, the patient goes home with a device and that device sends a signal. It's encrypted, it's HIPAA compliant, it's fingerprint technology. It tells me exactly what that patient is doing in real time. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, monitored in a war room of a hospital. So if something goes wrong, immediately we can intercede. We are working in tandem with Maris College. The agreement with Maris is that we're going to utilize their students to help do research and development and new product technology and development of technology onsite in the facility. So we have some ideas. They've seen some of the technology we're utilizing. We want to reduce the size of the technology, improve the technology, and hopefully send patients home with groundbreaking technology. It's groundbreaking today, but I want to reduce the size and I want to make it more efficient. So as we sit here today, and just in the past two weeks, I think I've hired fourteen people to start. And these people are nurse practitioners, these are project management people, all of them with clinical experience. Every one of the people coming on board are high-paying physicians. I expect the company to grow very rapidly. So we're anticipating probably initially in the first year or two, probably up to fifty to seventy-five individuals. And God knows from there. As Maris said, in three years, you'll be too big for us to handle you. So that's where we are today. And it's rapid growth, it's incredible growth, it's well-recognized, and the technology is all FDA-approved, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
And I can attest that while we were waiting to come up here, Dr. Baki was actually looking on his cell phone at information that was relevant to some of his patients' care. It's very exciting. As you mentioned, there'll be high-tech jobs brought here. I don't know if you mentioned the partnership with Basser Hospital as well?
We, we are working with a academic affiliation agreement so that their doctors could rotate through our units. We also have one of the largest. We also have one of the largest New York medical, let's say, medical colleges in New York that will agree to a residency rotation program through the unit. So we're going to have five medical students full-time rotating through the unit because of the academic environment that we created there. It is such high-tech, it has intensivist, it has cardiac nurses, it has this high-end equipment into it, and if we can replicate this throughout New York State, we're going to have a profound impact on senior care. My goal is to change the way senior care is delivered. I'm a baby boomer. By the year 2025, we're going to represent 20% of the population. I don't want to be in a nursing home. I want to be able to have care rendered at home, and we need the technology that we can develop to render that care at home. So that's the goal of the company.
Well, we're currently working with a very aged person in our family, and that's what you're talking about just makes perfect sense because it would be helpful to that patient, obviously, and the idea that returning to the hospital in the 30 days is all comes part of the formula that you try to figure out how you're going to keep that from doing... You know, it's very complicated. So if you can accomplish that goal, I think that's very good. The types of jobs you're going to be bringing here, it's going to be basically an office environment?
It's an office environment.
Computer room or whatever and that kind of thing?
Well, there's research and development, so the technology will be students rotating from Maris College, and they will be helping in developing new technology in affiliation, probably with someone like Ren Salir.
At your facility?
Yes, at the facility. And then we're going to have implementation teams, education teams. For, in order for us to walk into a nursing home and transform those 18 beds, we need IT people to walk in there to make sure that technology, the Wi-Fi systems are compatible. Number two, we have to have nurses trained, they have to go through specific training, 100-hour training course where they get trained in basic life support, advanced cardiac life support, the ability to read and monitor, just like they read in the hospital, they have to have that, EKG training, and a whole bunch of competencies for every nurse. So every nurse has to be qualified to work in that unit. So you're talking about IT first, nurses' training second, implementation teams that come on board, so there's a whole host of different components to this. And implementation, the goal is to implement four units a month going into the year 2018, which is pretty progressive.
Doctor, this present building is a two-story frame building, right? I take it that you're gutting this almost entirely to start over and do whatever it is that you want to do here? And is it going to be a nursing home facility?
No, 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 no.
Just 18 beds that is an ICU? Or is this all administration?
So basically, it's administration. The building was designed to be a catering hall, so it's wide-open space. And so all I have to do there is drop cubicles in.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing. We plan to drop at least 50 cubicles in there.
Kind of an open space, or are you going to have walls or just curtains?
No, wide-open space. Open space so we could see all the employees.
There'll be no patients there.
No patients there.
So basically like a recovery room in a hospital? Is this, is this setting?
No.
No, no. The old Duchess Golf Course, the old Duchess Golf Course will be where the headquarters of Telstat's located. So all the employees, the implementation teams, the educational teams, they all come out from there and then go into these nursing homes. We transform those beds in existing nursing homes, yes.
Like you have a facility up in Kingston, I believe?
Yes, Golden Hill Nursing Rehab. And that won the award. That actually was the first site ever in the United States.
It's a nice video you put out on that.
Thank you.
I watched it the other day. Going home with a tablet, I'm curious about the number of wires that would be on me when I left.
Okay, so that's a very interesting question, and I love that question because I don't like to be wired, right? Because I'm a senior and I'm not going to want wires hanging all over me. So what we're working to do with others, and including Maris, is to do patch technology, which is new, right? And what I'm going to do is take an adhesive patch, put sensors in that patch, take a Bluetooth device, take the signals, and Bluetooth the signals to a device that sits on your belt. And that sends the signal anyplace in the world I want it to go. So there's no more wires. The goal is to get away from the wires.
I like that idea.
Yeah. And we're working right now to do that. We're using microfilaments and different sensors. Now remember, I don't have to just do EKG leads. I can do your oxygen, your pulse, your respiration, your hydration level, your position. All of these things are available right now as we speak.
Well, I've seen people in the ICUs and it's just like, how many wires are actually there?
No, this is, the most you're going to have on you is six wires at a time. The other device is a, it looks like a watch, and that watch sends me your blood pressure, your pulse, and your oxygen level 24/7. This is telling me your EKG lead from six leads, where every cardiologist loves the fact that you can do that. And with the press of a button, a cardiologist can go back and see, your heartbeat's about 100,000 beats a day. So if they want to go back five days, or 10 days, or 30 days, they can actually go back, and it highlights where the change in rhythms occur during that 30-day period or five days.
Sounds like Telstat is kind of the gathering of a number of technology houses and bringing it all together.
It is. I mean, it's designed so that we can really do high-tech medicine and medicine for the future. And as I said, it's the first of its kind, and we've researched this over years. We have patent pending on all concepts, and soon you'll see the technology transform into your TV, so it's really going to change dramatically.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Doctor, you said that this building would be the headquarters for Telstat?
Yes.
Would that be for the entire state?
Yes, yes. And the question is, how large do we grow?
Right, that's why I was asking, not just Duchess County.
Oh, no, it's for the entire state. So we're going to start employees off, and obviously, we start in New York State. We might need other locations nationwide because of the affiliation with the REIT where they're looking for potentially 200 locations over the course of the next three years. So we're going to be hustling to get different locations, but this will be the main corporate headquarters. And that's why I wanted to envision the entire property as a corporate park, so to speak.
So this could grow, the other buildings?
This could grow if we required additional space. We would come back and say we need additional space, but, you know, we're going to be bringing, at that point, hopefully, a lot more jobs into the community as well.
There's some big buildings just south of there you could probably get pretty cheap.
We actually own buildings in Fishkill.
Not that far south.
No. But, you know...
You're referring to another golf course.
One of the benefits of the golf course is that it's strategically located. I mean, the location is strategic, it's two lights away from Maris, and we're working very closely with Maris here. So that's important to me. It's close to a train station, so I can get some employees from the city, right? Because you need high-tech employees to come in. And the fact that it's, you know, right down the road from Culinary Institute doesn't hurt, so, you know, there's a lot of benefit to me, especially working closely with Vassar as well.
Vassar Hospital, yeah. Plus, you might need the services of Watson?
Watson, yeah. Well, the interesting thing, so that is an interesting point. So one of the things that we're trying to accomplish is, once the data comes in for the first time ever, we're going to be looking at data from patients, right? And that data can be used to predict healthcare models. For example, in congestive heart failure, I'm going to say this very quickly, in congestive heart failure, your heart fails, and the first thing that happens is fluid starts to build up in your legs typically. That fluid translates to weight. So on my monitors, the first thing I'm going to see is a patient's weight increase. But as the fluid continues to build, it goes into your lung, and all of a sudden, you're taking shallow respirations. So your respiratory rate increases. But now that you have fluid in your lungs, your oxygen level decreases, and your cardiac output decreases. So as I start to look at those four parameters through Watson, I can predict a day in advance before you go into heart failure. That's just one example of what we can do.
You said congestive heart failure.
Congestive heart failure.
Oh, congestive, I thought you said in congestive, okay.
No, congestive, in, when you go into congestive heart failure, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're talking about hospitals benefiting from this and nursing homes. How do doctors feel about it? Will they still maintain their patient relationship and everything?
They love it because there's continuity of care. So if you have an academic affiliation with the hospital, their doctors that are seeing you in the hospital are rotating through our unit. So it's the same doctors taking care of the patient in the next level of care. So they love it because once they walk into your facility, they can bill fee-for-service for a consultation. So the doctors love it. The hospitals love it because they can discharge the sicker patients to you because your rate reimbursement for Medicare, as an example, I get paid $567 a day for everything that I do. A hospital can charge you $5,000 a day. So it's in their best interest to get the patient out because they're under a bundled payment. They get X amount for diagnosis. If they get the patient out faster, they make money. If they can send it to us faster, they can make money. They're uncomfortable because they never had a facility that could treat these high-acuity patients, and now they can.
So you're mentioning you're focused on these 18-bed units in nursing homes and that helps keep the rotation out, going back and forth to the hospital? Is there an application beyond that so you can age in place at home versus getting to a nursing home at all?
Well, the intention of the tablet device is so that we can really monitor patients regardless of if they were in a hospital or not, right? So seniors, at some point, if it becomes cost-effective, it may cost you $150 a month to be monitored, but you're monitored 24/7 at home. So if you have a loved one, for example, at home, you'd want that one to be monitored, that individual to be monitored. Now you could have comfort knowing that at least someone's watching them. And that makes a big difference in the way healthcare is rendered in that population.
And these patches and things, whatever, they're going to be compatible with taking a shower or those things?
Oh, yes. The patches are waterproof, the ones we're developing, they're replaceable after three or four days. The batteries are all replaceable, the patch slips back on, and you're good to go. That's the game plan.
So there are batteries associated with the patch?
Yes. Yeah, because it has to transmit a signal from here to a device.
Okay.
Yeah, but they're so small, the battery, they're like tiny.
And you said they ought to be replaced how often?
The current battery life is about three days. The newer batteries will probably last a week to 10 days.
That sounds like an expensive, if it's anything like the hearing aid batteries, those things are expensive, is that correct?
The cost of the patch is going to be a nominal cost, it really is.
I would assume anything that's at the home rather than a nursing home is a cheaper way to go.
Oh, my God.
And that's a given.
It's tremendous savings, both to the family and to Medicare and to everyone. I mean, the hassle that the family has to go through on a 30-day readmission, think about it, it's winter time. You now have to take the patient, put him into an ambulance, send him to the hospital, they're in observation for 24 hours, you know? And then they get sent back.
Any other questions? Peter, good?
Seems very sensible.
It's where it needs to go.
I agree.
So along those lines, I move the planning board convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding a proposed zoning map amendment for a 10.9-acre portion of 2628 South Road from residence, single-family, two-acre, R-2A to highway business, BH District, and additionally recommend the application for change of zone be corrected to reflect the current owner of record and the current filed deed for the existing parcel. So we'll get the names straightened out on the applications and all.
Second.
And seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. We got a little housekeeping to do with the names and stuff, so.
I'll take care of that. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Very, very good presentation.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Everybody should hear that.
Well, I look forward to working. I mean, we're so excited. Today, we got the grant, so it's just...
Congratulations. That's wonderful.
It's a great day for us.
Thank you for bringing it to the Hudson's Island.
And thank you for picking a town of Poughkeepsie. And by the way, all that money you spent on landscaping and, you know, dressing up along Route 9, taking down that fence, well-spent, it looks fantastic. When you drive by, you can see what's there, and it's just, it's just not a wooden blur, it's very, very nice.
Beautiful property I've ever seen.
It is a gorgeous place. Great recruiting area that you can say, bring your clubs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five, McKee Construction Building, Architectural Review of Modifications to the smaller northern one of two existing buildings for a construction business, 2264-2270 South Road on BH Highway Business District, 3.36 acres, type 2 action, Town Center Poughkeepsie LLC owner. Hello.
Hi. John McKee.
Hello, John.
How you doing?
Good. Long time no see.
Same here. That's a tough act to follow. Why couldn't I go before him?
Look how much you learned.
Yeah, well, you know, it's true. He's in my backyard, too.
I know. In my backyard, too. And he's in your in-laws' backyard, too.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Well, since I live next door to them, yes.
Yeah. That's true.
Okay, what you got? Just looking for site plan approval for building on Route 9. I've been here before, and pretty much the same as previous. Looking to clean it up, make it look nice.
Didn't we have approval for this once before?
Twice. Twice. The stars didn't align the other two times, unfortunately.
Oh, okay. So you're talking about the building to the north of the Davis Furniture?
Yes.
Okay, and Route 9 across from, you know where that is?
Wait a minute, which building?
The one to the north.
Yeah, not Davis.
Right, right.
No, the smaller building right next to Davis, yeah.
You said Davis, that's why.
Next to.
Part of Duke Pontiac.
So this, so this is, that's the plan of record?
Yes. I got samples of the siding for a little better color, the yellow didn't come out too good on that printer.
Okay.
Would you like to see them?
Yes, please.
And John, is that, is that full-size elevation, does it have legible print on it?
Yes, it does. It's a siding. You do anything more in the front? Oh, you did the rock wall there.
John, you got to use the mic. You can, as a handheld mic, you can take.
Oh, sorry.
Is this an input?
This is what, you can carry, that one if you want.
I'm not planning on doing much more other than a dual monument sign. It'll be similar to the stonework that's in the front of the building already.
Are you bored?
It's a little better color than that.
That's certainly better than the color on your printer.
I know, sorry.
That's a siding color. You'll see that.
Yeah.
Okay. Have you picked a contractor to do this?
I'm looking for one right now.
Just figured it had.
John, I thought I remembered you saying something on the phone about, on the sketch that we got, some things that you're changing or not doing or adding to.
Well, you were talking, there was a Phase 2 on there. I wrote, the phase, there is no Phase 2, it's all going to be done in one time, and it's exactly what this drawing is and what the drawing is you have there, or the picture you have there.
Can you just bring that a little closer?
It didn't come out as well.
Yeah. Thanks, Ed.
So the columns and the stone wall are going to be done up front along with the building work?
The columns, I'm not doing, no.
Oh.
The stonework is, the stonework is done there already, there is stonework that's been done on the front there already, and I, you know, I'll finish it as I get an approval, if I get an approval for it.
The stonework, the stonework is on the building now?
No, it's, the stonework is where the sign would be.
Right, there's no stone on the building.
Oh, no, not on the building, no, there's no stonework on the back.
That's like it, out in front.
So the front of the building would be, the dark areas, that's windows?
It's all glass, yeah.
It's all glass?
So there's no, yeah, there's no, yeah.
That's that, isn't it tinted glass?
Yeah, it is, there's a tinting in it.
It's very dark tint, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's actually shade, there's shades on the inside, so it looks like it's a dark tint.
And you're looking to make like a showroom, or what, how you?
That's the plan. I'm not sure what I want to do yet, but getting a CO.
Three or five years, John?
Yeah, yeah.
Block to be painted, what color? You have to sample that?
Harris cream, it's the same as this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Fire department's okay with that wall in relation to the hydrant?
Yes, I've, well, I haven't had any complaints the past two times, I've got approvals.
Do you want more of this? You can have it back. We're going to keep that eventually, we're going to keep that, but if you get approval tonight. Okay, anybody have any questions or?
When are you going to do this?
Soon, as soon as I get an approval.
So that means tomorrow?
If I get one tomorrow, I'll be there working.
Okay. You got to get building permits first.
Oh, really?
I would imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would check with building department, make sure you need, probably some kind of permit you need.
I know, yeah, I'm sure, yeah. I was just kidding.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
To accept architectural renderings for the McKee Construction Building, as we have seen.
Second.
Okay, to move in second, we accept the architecture as presented, and the color is shown, and the paint color as you stated, and he'll leave that board, and he said he will go get the building permits and start as soon as they're issued. Okay, sounds good. Call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Did I have a second? We did, okay, make sure. You're good to go. All right. Thank you. Six-zero, sorry, six-zero.
Do I get the sample back, or do you want them?
We want them. You can keep one of them. You might want to use it in a corner or something.
All right.
Same?
Yeah.
We just need one set, we don't need multiple sets.
You're good. Good, that'll look nice.
You got one more piece of siding. Yeah, all right.
Okay, and the other business, Hyatt Hotel, Hyatt Place Hotel, time extension for conditionally approved site plan for ninety-five-room, four-story, sixty-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-square-foot Hyatt Place Hotel with ninety-eight parking spaces, South Road, US Route Nine, Chief Road, N Chief Road, Zone BH Business Highway, District eight-point-four-three acres, negative deck was adapted on December seventeen, two thousand and fifteen. Additional site plan approval granted March seventeen, two thousand and sixteen. MVK Enterprises Inc. Owner, Eric?
We're recommending the board grant a time extension for two ninety-day periods forward to September thirteenth.
Okay. So move, second?
Second.
Move to second, and the planning board grant a time extension of conditional site plan approval for two ninety-day periods from March seventeen, two thousand and seventeen forward to September thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. All those in favor?
Aye.